This fall, I hope the practice continues.
You do.
So, um, let's pray. Our dear heavenly Father, I ask tonight that you continue to give each of this council wisdom and guidance as they continue leading this city forward in the next few years. Give them good health, rest, wisdom, as they make decisions. As we often say of groups like this council, they got a lot on their plates. We continue to be amazed at the growth of this valley. I was not surprised to hear on television that most of the people that are moving here are from California. Many are retired, but the number of new students at our school this fall means there's a lot of young families also. I pray that we can get on top of our enrollment problems with new schools and expanded facilities in the near future. We continue to thank you for our police, our firemen, and our emergency personnel who help make our city safe and worry free. Our road system is being taxed to the maximum, and we ask that our driving patterns keep down the number of accidents each week. Tonight, I pray for the rank and file of the city employees who help keep our city running smoothly. They often are overlooked, but the clerks, the planners, and the regular employees are so essential to our growth and well-being. So tonight, we thank you, God, for all the blessings that you've given us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you for joining us.
Mm-hmm.
And Betty, too. Okay, item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
We have, uh, we just finished up a work session, and we ran a little long. So one of the items from the work session, we anticipated covering then, we didn't cover. So for that reason, we're going to add it to the end as a new item 10 to this agenda. It'll be an executive session under state code 742061-D as in dog. And with that amendment to the agenda, I move it be adopted.
I have a motion and a second.
Madam Mayor? Sorry.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I just wanted to clarify, are we doing 1C and 1D, or just 1D as in David? 1D as in David. Thank you.
We lost the, the staff on C.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Under, um, item five announcement, uh, we have a finer living series. This is for our mature community, which means over 50. They, they keep lowering it, so we feel better about being called seniors. This finer living series kicks off, the first of three, with crisis avoidance. You don't have to be a senior to come, come to this. Uh, you can also come and, and learn how to support, um, your parents or grandparents. This is on Friday, September 27th, from 10:00 to noon here at City Hall. Uh, we still have our Main Street Market going on through the end of the month, the Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00. And that's all I had. Any, any further announcements? Okay? Item six, feature meeting topics. Mr. Clerk?
Madam Mayor, there were no sign-ins for this topic.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, under action items. 7A is, um, an item for council's consideration that we'll hear from Mr. Hood and Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On September 3rd, Carolyn Vaught, a real estate agent representing the property owner at 1370 West Lake Hazel Road, asked the council to prepare a letter, uh, to the city of Kuna relinquishing the subject lands from our area of impact. Uh, it's my understanding that that owner is trying to sell the property and is requesting, uh, that the land be, uh, again, removed from Meridian's planning area. Um, the, the subject property is 19.5 acres, located near the northeast corner of Lake Hazel, uh, and Linder. It's currently planned on, in Meridian's, on Meridian's future land use map, part of our comprehensive plan for rural estate residential. Uh, that's this lighter green color, um, that you see on the map. What you don't see on this map is the subdivisions show up, so a lot in blocks and subdivisions are there. Um, there are three parcels that make up this 40-acre block here, and I'll, a little bit more on that in a second. Um, but again, it's, it's medium density, or, excuse me, rural, uh, estate residential right now on, on the city's, uh, future land use map. Uh, as part of developing the new comprehensive plan, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch to a new map, and this map is not adopted yet. Um, but staff has worked pretty diligently with the city of Kuna to, uh, define that planning boundary, area of city impact boundary that you see before you. Again, this isn't official yet, um, but it is something that we've been talking with Kuna, working with them on, where services should be provided within each of the jurisdictions. Um, and that's what you see on this map. And the subject property is just off, um, the intersection of Lake Hazel and, uh, Linder. So it's 19, the 19 and a half acres, uh, right here. Again, we spent quite a bit of time negotiating that, uh, new line, and the needed infrastructure that goes along with it. I do appreciate that Kuna has sent the applicant our direction, that is, the gentleman's agreement that the mayor referred to during the work session before the process that we've agreed to with Kuna, before they process anything or accept any applications, come and petition the city of Meridian to relinquish property. So I do appreciate that. Um, there are other parcels, though, again, that are impacted here, uh, with this case. There's a five-acre parcel that, that is right on the corner of the intersection, another 19 and a half acre parcel, um, that's just, uh, located to the north, excuse me, a 15-acre parcel that's located to the north to make up that 40 that you see here. Um, the designation is also changed, or potentially changing with the adoption of the new future land use map, to medium-high-density residential. For these reasons, so the planning reasons that have gone into, um, service providing, planning for services in this area, uh, planning staff is, uh, not favorable of this request and thinks that it, we should let this plan play out a little bit before we, um, modify the line any further. Mr. Stewart does have some, um, things to add to that.
Yeah, so, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, maybe to give you a little bit of insight on some, you, from, from the utility standpoint, sewer and water, um, our current master plan does show service to this area via the extension of, of sewer trunk lines that will extend from the, the, the facilities that we just built. We just made the, the large commitment and, and built the sewer line down Meridian Road and, and crossed that road just south of Amity there. That line will eventually be extended, uh, a good portion of the way towards this property, and this property will then, or this area, this 40-acre area will have, have a lift station that we'll pump to that. So we do already have infrastructure, which we have built, is in place, which contemplated service to this area, and it was sized to accommodate that. So there have been existing in, in investments that have been made. Caleb already touched on this, but we, we have worked for years, actually since the time I have been here, 10 years that I have been here, to negotiate a boundary with the city of Kuna that we could both sort of agree to adhere to. And this is significant because we have to make investments in this infrastructure. If we change that after we have already started to build some of this infrastructure, we essentially waste that investment, or it's unutilized investment. We could have used that money elsewhere. So that is kind of in play here. We've already made some of those investments, and if we, if we don't adhere to some of these boundaries, then there is the potential that we have essentially spent money that we didn't need to. And then finally, I think it's, it's important to keep in mind that if we allow this particular piece of property to, uh, be annexed into Kuna, there are these two parcels that Caleb alluded to that are immediately to the west. It would essentially block us from the ability to serve those. So if we let this one go from a utility perspective, we essentially let the whole 40 go, because we wouldn't be able to effectively get sewer and water through this property over to serve that isolated area. So with that in mind, we're sort of on the same boat as Caleb. It seems premature to, to let this particular property out of the city of Meridian, but I wanted you to make you aware of those, those issues. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Council, you have the requests in front of you and, and the responses from staff. Uh, any questions for, um, the requister or our staff members?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
I know this isn't a public hearing, but if the requister had any information that they felt pertinent to share, I'm open to hearing that.
I'm here.
Right, I, I know you're here. That's why I'm saying be.
Um, typically, if you need information that's outside the, the letter, um, it's, it's not, um, something that, uh, we've been advised to do, but.
Madam Mayor, I think she's already presented the information in the letter, but if there's a question or some other clarification, that's certainly within your discretion.
Um, that is why I asked if council had any additional information you needed.
I guess, Madam Mayor, I, I would ask then the, the requister if they had any feedback or comments related to the information that was shared by staff.
I do, yes. So when I initially.
Um, you'll, if I can invite you up to the podium, if you'll please, uh, tell us your name and address.
Carolyn Vaught, and I live here in Meridian, 820 East 3rd Street. So.
Thank you.
Um, I have Alice Eschelman, the owner of the property, here with me tonight. When I first came to Meridian to talk about the zoning and what it could be sold for, I was advised to go to Kuna because I was told this was going to be annexed into Kuna eventually. So I went to Kuna and talked to them, and they said I had to get a letter from Meridian. In the meantime, I have been talking to the Wilsons, to the west of them. So I have never talked to Caleb, I don't think, but usually it's Kevin I've been talking to. But the Wilsons are also interested in annexing, and I know that Harriets and Tidwells and Jarvis's, all the way around this property, have annexed into Kuna. So that's how we got started down this path, is we're just trying to sell Mrs. Eschelman's property so she can retire, because she's a barber, and she supports her husband in a nursing home on her barber income, because we haven't been able to sell this property because we don't have the zoning cleared up. So that's how this all started, and I'm just looking for some direction from the city of Meridian now that I was told to go to Kuna, and I did, and I was told to come back. So.
Madam Mayor?
Somebody point me in the right direction, and I'll go there.
I have one question. You mentioned that you, uh, had a question about the zoning, or you, um, I didn't realize we were talking about the zoning this evening.
It was currently zoned RUT. So when I went to list the property, I asked, you know, what is the future plan with this? And when I went to the city, they showed me where it was eventually going to be annexed into Kuna, and that there were no utilities here. So this is a big challenge, is the utilities would have to come from Kuna, because to come from Meridian, it's quite a distance. So it really hurts the value of this property for her to sell it this way. So we were advised to go to Kuna because the utilities are literally across the street. So we're just trying to figure it out. To be honest with you, she wants to get this property sold, and it made the most sense that it was annexed, but I understand what I'm hearing about the utilities, I get that. But I also know that Wilsons are interested in selling to the west. They are the five-acre parcel. Mrs. Eschelman actually sold off all of this land. She's lived there her whole life. And when they had trouble during the farming crisis, she ended up selling some land, so she sold, sold the Citadel and the property that the Wilsons own. So she owned that entire 40-acre parcel at one point. So we have been in communication now. Citadel, I have talked to them once, but they haven't gotten back with me, but the Wilsons are interested in annexing. And so, and then I was told by Kuna that that property was designated as commercial because of the high density that is coming in, in that area with the high school and about 2,500 homes. There's about 2,500 home sites that have been approved in Kuna that are actually north of this property. So we're just trying to figure out what's the best use, highest and best use. So that's how it all got started. There's my story.
Thank you. Well, uh, we're sorry that you're being sent here and there and, and all over. We have been going through this comprehensive plan update process, and, and as, um, Mr. Stewart mentioned, we've invested in sewer-ing the areas that we have in our plan, and have already expended dollars to, to do so. And those are dollars that would be lost to our existing ratepayers, um, if they can't be recouped. So, and, and our staff takes, um, that responsibility very serious. Council, um, questions, comments? Thank you for providing us more information.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
I do have a question for staff. It's more to the, how did this boundary get drawn the way that it is, and how this parcel seems like it, you put a straight line there, it would make a lot more sense. So it almost doesn't make sense looking at it like this. I'm not sure how that 40 acres got included into, um, our area of impact, though our impact has shrunk from where it was before, but there are some really weird cutouts, and so can you maybe give me some history on that?
I think, yeah.
Sorry, just realized it was off. Madam Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Mylum, part of that has to do with, um, what Kuna's already annexed, so a good chunk of the, the part that we're relinquishing has already been annexed into Kuna's corporate boundaries. Some of that has to do with the serviceability and the lift station and keeping a presence on this intersection as well. Um, so there are a couple of different things in play there. Um, but again, the, the jut out there a little bit has to do with the lands north of this 40 anyways, some of that already going to Kuna, and then the serviceability of that to Meridian in the future not being very feasible with what they've already annexed in the general vicinity. I, I will just point out a couple of other things that are related. Um, you know, again, if you write a letter, I would say, write the letter to let the whole 40 go, because we can't service the five on the corner or the other 19, 15 that's, that's north of it, and don't be surprised when they come in, and they come in, and they come in, and they come in, and they come in. So basically, everybody below here is on that same lift station, and it really is a timing issue. You can develop this in Kuna sooner than you could in Meridian, but services are today.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Right about here in Meridian, as far as, as far as sewer goes. Um, that's the, the big Meridian Road project that we did, um, and it, it, yeah, and right about in this location, but that is still quite a distance to get to this subject property. So, again, if you take action today or relinquish it, probably makes sense to do all this, and then, again, don't be surprised if you start to see more and more, because, yeah, you do have a lot of those units that were, that were being talked about or built, being built right here in the new high school just south of there, so this area certainly is developing in Kuna.
And I guess the next question would be, what, what is the, the cost, because it will not be reimbursed, that was figured into the cost model? And, and that's.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
So say we say, no, we're not going to relinquish this property, but Kuna annexes it anyway. Is that, do we just, are we just back to where we were six years ago? And then it's just a war on property?
I think staff has worked really hard. Um, we've, as Warren mentioned, we've been at the table for 10 years trying to, to come to some agreement. It's similar to the application that came up in front of council and, that was continued last week. And Mr. Borton's statement, this application is dead to me if the city of Boise doesn't want to relinquish it from their area of impact. I think those are the values of having those agreements, um, between cities and, and to, to have an understanding if there is a cost implication, um, what, what that means, because we had to make a commitment to serve these areas, um, when we, um, adopted our comprehen, our area of impact.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Warren, uh, I apologize if you did say this. Is, is the, the cost investment, um, the only factor here, or is this one of those situations where, because of what we've planned and built for, that there would be, um, issues with it not actually using the capacity that it was built for? Or would it just be overcapacity?
I suppose. Us cost in and flow models, right?
Yeah, so we, we have existing trunk sewer lines that were sized to accommodate all the property within a particular sewer shed. That property includes, in this particular sewer shed, that includes this particular parcel, or this 40. So if you take that out, essentially, you, you'll, there'll be a situation where some of those pipes will have been oversized, or they will be oversized for what they really needed. So we will have spent money, uh, in pipes that are bigger than they needed to be, uh, in order to serve this parcel. And it also affects the hydraulics. We keep those pipe sizes that, the size that they are, so the hydraulics work well. We can clean those sewer lines and everything else, and you do run the risk of having a situation where hydraulically, they don't function as efficiently and effectively as they would have if they had had the flow that they were intended to have if we had built it according to the plan. So maybe that answers your question, I hope.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, that perfectly answered my question. That, that's the, the even, as much of a stickler as I am on, on finances and expenses over the last four years, um, there's a certain level of, of, I guess, willingness for me to, to be able, to understand that circumstances like this may happen in which that makes sense. Um, what pulls me out of being willing to make that decision is when we start getting to where there's potential function issues because of doing that, because then it's not just an, uh, an upfront expense, it's a, this is something we're gonna have to deal with forever, and that pulls me out of being willing to, to relinquish it.
Any other questions? Okay? Council, I, I'll ask for direction regarding this request. Mr. Borton?
I think, uh, Joe, turn your mic over. Um, Madam Mayor, the, the, on a micro level, what Carolyn's describing is, is certainly sympathetic, but the long-term planning process and infrastructure that's been described seems to outweigh the, the individual consideration is outweighed by the metrics that our staff has described in the, in the long-term investment and functional, functionality of the system. So for those reasons, to this request, um, I move that we deny the request to relinquish lands.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, most caring. Item 7B, uh, for public hearing, H 2019 dash 0091. This needs to be continued, um, because we did not have, um, a full noticing of this public hearing. Um, we did not do the mailings, and so the applicant has reposted, and the clerk has noticed and, and re-noticed, uh, this public hearing. And that's set for October 15th, right?
That is correct.
So this isn't even an item we can hear. So I don't open this public hearing, because it doesn't exist. Okay. So I don't need any action to remove it from the agenda. Okay? Thank you. If anyone is here for this particular item, item 7B, our apologies if you saw it on the, um, city, city's website, um, but it has not been noticed appropriately, so we cannot hear it. So item 7C is a public hearing, continued from September 3rd, on H 2019 dash 0066. I will open this public hearing with staff comments, and before Kevin, um, you provide your staff comments, is there anyone here new for the first time? Okay, I, I will just briefly discuss or give you an overview of our public hearing process. Um, so we have staff present, um, the application and their comments. We'll then ask the applicant to come forward for any additional comments they have, up to 15 minutes. After their presentation, we open the public comment period. You have three minutes to provide your t- testimony, and we do have a timer on the podium when you come up. I'll ask you your name and address, and, and then ask for your remarks. Um, at the end of the public comment, uh, the applicant will come forward with any summary remarks and answer any questions that came up during public testimony. Uh, then council has an opportunity to, to ask staff, applicant, or any of those that provided testimony, uh, questions. I will, um, note that there is extensive public, um, records that are kept on each of our public hearings that incorporate planning and zoning commission minutes, staff reports, agency comments, any, um, citizen, uh, letters or comments as well. So with that said, I will turn this over to Kevin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you mentioned, this is in the Millbrae subdivision, uh, annexation and preliminary plat application before you continued from September 3rd due to a tie vote, so it's good to see you here tonight, Madam Mayor. Just a quick recap, the site consists of 8.79 acres of land, currently zoned RUT, located at the northwest corner of West Cherry Lane and North Black Cat Road. The, uh, comprehensive plan future land use map designation is currently light-density residential. Um, the applicant is requesting a preliminary plat of 41 single-family residential building lots and five building lots for the development of detached homes at a gross density of 4.7 dwelling units per acre. This is slightly higher than the three dwelling units per acre standard associated with the low-density flume designation this property currently has. The applicant is requesting a step up in density to a medium-dense residential designation. The comprehensive plan does allow for step-ups in density, and applicant's requests meet the required criteria. In addition, uh, through the ongoing comprehensive plan update, this property is designated to being changed to a medium-dense residential designation, as you can see here with the three maps in front of you. Uh, since the proposed density does fit with the surrounding neighborhood densities, and applicant's request is in line with this potential future change, staff is comfortable with applicant's step-up request. At the direction of, uh, the commission, the applicant has worked with the neighbor to the west to relocate the stub street shown, uh, going to their property. So that explains the two differences here you see with these two plat maps. And in response to conditions listed in the staff report, the applicant has provided a revised open space calculation showing 11.9% open space. Amenities in the subdivision include a children's play structure, uh, in the middle area there, multi-use pathways along both Black Cat and Cherry Lane, and a picnic shelter and seating areas throughout the development. Um, the applicant has submitted conceptual elevations, shown here. Commission did recommend approval. Um, just to recap some of the, uh, key issues that were brought up in the September 3rd council meeting, um, there was some concern raised over the requested step-up in density, and there was concern over the location of the access point on North Black Cat Road, going back here, um, and its, uh, proximity to the major intersection of Cherry and Black Cat. And then there was also some discussion about a potential left-hand turn lane on Black Cat Road. Uh, council did direct the applicant to meet with ACHD to see if there was any way to resolve these issues. The applicant has met with ACHD, and their correspondence has been added to the public record, so hopefully you had a chance to review that. I'm sure they'll also be, uh, explaining how that discussion went. There's a couple outstanding issues for council. Uh, the first is a, the requested step-up in the future land use map density, and the second is just some cleanup items, uh, due to having to relocate that stub street, um, that, uh, basically we need to match up the, the plat with the landscape plan, so just a couple, uh, housekeeping items there. Uh, and with that, staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. Council, any questions? Would the applicant like to comment? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thanks for being here tonight. My name is Jane Suggs, WH Pacific, 2141 West Airport Way, and I'm here representing Millbrae subdivision. I've got a few slides to show. Kevin did a really good job of giving an overview, and I really appreciate that. So I'm not really going to start off at the very beginning, since most of you are here. I will just remind everyone that this is basically an infill development. One of the council members was concerned about moving too far beyond our city limits, but you'll see in the green that that's the city limits that currently exist right now. Here we go. This is basically showing the site. This is just a reminder, too, that you have annexed and rezoned the property to the west, which is the Burlingame subdivision. I don't know if I can show you this right here. That's the Burlingame. That was annexed with a step up to R8. Also, the Meridian Missionary Church that was rezoned south of us to R8. And above us are two churches with LO zoning designations. As Kevin mentioned, the soon-to-be-approved comprehensive plan shows the area as medium density, and so we are very respectfully requesting that you rezone this to R8 when you annex this property. Again, almost like an infill property. You'll recall, and from the previous hearing, that Mr. McEwen asked us to revise the stub street. Kevin just showed you that. We were happy to meet with Mr. McEwen or talk to him through email and make that change so that it stubs to a location that he says is most appropriate for the future use of his property. And at the last council meeting, Mr. McEwen raised some concerns with traffic, and council asked us to meet. And we did meet with, pretty immediately, right? The next week, we met with the ACHD representatives. We talked about the turn lane on Black Cat, the location of White Birch Street, which is the entry street off of Black Cat. There was some concern that that location required a policy adjustment. Typically, entry levels, local streets are about 600 feet from a major intersection like Black Cat and Cherry Lane. However, we don't have 600 feet of frontage along Black Cat. So the policy of ACHD along this is a staff level. We didn't have to go to the commission. They were able to give us the location that we've chosen for our preliminary plat. And of course, there was some concern also about the level of service of Black Cat and Cherry Lane and the use of the developers cooperative, which has been used for some larger projects in the area. And I hope you've read those communications that we've had with ACHD. I think it's very clear that there is not a need for a turn lane. We actually had a traffic engineer do an analysis for turn lane, both the left turn and the right turn lane in that area. That analysis shows that there's not a need for a turn lane. The access location of White Birch off of Black Cat is appropriate and was approved by ACHD. There is not a need for intersection improvements at Black Cat and Cherry Lane as the level of service, even with the future development around there, will be fine. And ACHD responded that the developers cooperative is not really the appropriate vehicle for doing any kind of improvements if there was a need for improvements. So I think we've addressed the things that the city council had to ask us to do, which is go back to ACHD and ask those questions that were on everyone's mind at the last hearing. Again, we do respectfully request that you approve our subdivision, our annexation, and our rezon to R8. And I can stand for further questions if there are more questions about our meeting with ACHD or some of the design of our project. The one thing I did want to mention is in our open space calculation, which seems to be just over the 10%, we did not include the lot that's along the north boundary. That is a lot that is for an irrigation pond, and you have some requirements for irrigation ponds to be in lots that are much larger. So we took that out of our calculation of open space. Though it will be open space, there will be a fence around it, as requested by the P&amp;Z, and we will have a little bench out front. So if you want to enjoy that landscaped area, that will be not part of the pond. So that's why there's a little more open space, and actually, the numbers tell you. Again, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any sign-ups for this public comment?
Madam Mayor, there are. There are 10 individuals signed in regarding this topic. Three wish to testify. The complete list is available by clicking the sign-in dashboard on your desktops, and all names will be added to the record of the meeting. The first signed in is William McEwen.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Council. My name is William McEwen. I'm at 5120 West Cherry Lane. And I don't know why I took those glasses off, because I can't see this. So we understand that there will be no left turn lane provided for the ingress and egress for the Millbrae, Millbrae Development entrance. I think this is just unfortunate for everyone involved. I don't know how much it costs to put 200 feet of one lane of blacktop in, but I can't imagine it being more than $15,000. And the blacktop of this, not putting it in there at this time, I think is irresponsible, and I think it's reckless. My beliefs are backed up by the facts and statistics that I've provided the city council previously, and they're in your minutes. You have an option of voting any way you want to on this project, and that's why you're elected. I have a property to protect, and if you decide to approve this project as it stands, I will not open up the street stub laid out by the Millbrae plan, as residents will use my property to drive through in order to make up for the inadequacies so blatantly pointed out to you. At such time as the ACHD sees fit to put in a left turn lane, which based on my conversations with ACHD, will be more than 10 years from now, I will consider my options at that time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Sir?
Yes.
Mr. Burnt?
Thank you, Mr. McEwen. I've got a question for you. You mentioned that you're not going to be opening up the stubs. Are you talking about with development or just, what were you, what were you?
With any kind of development on my property.
Right. So, I guess, are you concerned that people would be driving in your property without it being developed? I guess I'm trying to understand.
They can't. They'll put in the stub, they won't be able to drive through, but I'm not going to develop anything on my property and hooking into that subdivision without a turn lane.
No, I agree. So what would be your concern with people?
My concern is that they won't be able to make a left turn lane, and they'll use access through the other development that was, that was approved by council last year, drive through theirs, or they'll drive through my driveway. But because they can't make a left turn lane...
Do you honestly believe that?
Yeah, I do, because...
You think, I don't mean to interrupt, you honestly believe that people are going to be driving on your property without it being developed to get?
No, 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 no. I didn't say that at all. What I said is if I develop my property and hook up the streets, they'll use those streets to get home so that they don't have to try and turn left into the subdivision. No, I'm not crazy. Just checking, okay?
I just wanted to make, just clarify that that's what you're talking about, because I thought, I thought there was a hairbit of craziness there.
There you go. No, it's not there.
Okay.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next is Bradley Law.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bradley Law. My address is 4888 West Cherry Lane here in Meridian.
Can you move the microphone a little closer? Thank you.
Okay. It's actually the property that's the closest northwest, right on the corner, a five-acre parcel, along with our neighbors. My primary concern coming up here is to give you guys a face with this project. This is not just a subdivision. It's not just developers trying to do things. It's me, it's my disabled mother, it is my fiancee trying to move on with our lives. My parents moved, bought this property back 28 years ago. Our neighbor's been there for over 30. We've watched the sprawl of Meridian literally surround us. As Jane said, you have approved R8 just south of us, you've approved R8 a few hundred feet west of us. Where's the consistency? I mean, we brought up concerns about the step up. It's already being shown to go that way in your next comprehensive plan, yet we're still concerned about the step up. I don't get that. We're looking for the best and highest use for our property, and this appears to be really our only option. Our, the previous speaker has brought up a number of issues, and now it seems as if we had Jane and everyone involved spend extra money to change the stub road, and he seems to be trying to throw it in their face of, oh, I'm not going to use it now, even though you spent the time to do it, because he's not getting his way. Again, the concerns that have been brought up, there's no other options to do with the property. The road can only go where it goes. That's what ACHD says. This has been approved by the fire department. It's been approved by, you know, as far as any safety concerns. There's going to be a pathway along the outside edge of it with a sidewalk. That's going to be much safer than it is currently. If anything, as a safety concern, we're elevating the safety of the property from where it is currently. The, and, you know, we had farmland all the way around us when we moved there. Now we have subdivisions on two sides, two churches behind us, a church on the other side, 19-acre subdivision going in. We're just looking for the consistency. Let's keep everything the same and just stop the dragging on. Our life is on hold. We are literally paused. Without this decision being made here, we don't know what our next step for our life is, and that's what we're trying to get through. So I just want to, at bare minimum, put a face to the project for you so you can remember that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, your final sign-in is April Peterson.
Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is April Peterson, 1101 West River Street.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor DeWeard and council members. It's a little intimidating, all these eyeballs looking at me.
I'll go like this.
Oh, gosh. Brad, one of the homeowners, did a fantastic job of explaining to you not only the urgency, but the magnitude of the situation for both him, his disabled mother, and also Kent and Nancy Bleak, who have the other five-acre parcel. So the Law family has a five-acre parcel, the Bleak family has a five-acre parcel, they border each other, about five acres, I should say. And so this development is about nine-ish acres. As it's been mentioned, you know, they really are surrounded by medium and high density already on every single side, northeast, south, and west. And as we all know, Meridian has grown faster than any of us expected, you know? And so when, you know, the future comp plan, you know, isn't maybe up to date, we all know why, you know? Meridian's such a great place to live. Everyone wants to live here. And so here you've had, you know, two amazing residents that have both been here for 30 years, taxpayers. They moved into this area, like Brad said, to enjoy the rural life, and it's become a city around them. And so my husband and I represent them on the real estate side, and we spent many hours trying to get them the highest and best price and the highest and best use for their land, which actually is a developer overputting their land on the MLS. So, you know, they raised their families here, you know, their kids are grown and gone now, grandkids, and they're ready for the next season of life. And now they have an opportunity to have a very handsome price to enjoy retirement. You know, both of them have already, Mr. Bleak has already put money down to build a home. It's already being built, it's in process in rural Nampa. And the Law family is already purchasing a property up in northern Idaho in another rural area. So they're trying to get out, and the developer is saying, hey, everybody wants to move to Meridian. You know, it's an amazing city. We could have 41-plus new residents, taxpayers, enjoying the city of Meridian. There hasn't been any opposition, you know, even Mr. McEwen, while I absolutely respect his concerns for safety and, you know, my heart goes out to him, only moving into the area three years ago, and now this big development going up next door, I would be a little upset too and concerned. However, you know, progress, Meridian is growing. So to end, I'm sorry, I'm going over on time. Recently, I was at a, an event with you, actually, Mayor, and Mr. Simison. And one of the number-one questions that the residents of Meridian were asking Mr. Simison is, number one, how do we get more roads and wider roads? And number two, how can we have more affordable housing in the city of Meridian? There isn't any.
Can you summarize?
Yes.
Thank you.
So in conclusion, not only do I believe this is the best use for these two long-term residents of Meridian, but I also believe it's the best use for the new incoming residents, you know, that we're greatly lacking. So I just would ask respectfully that you create a win-win for everyone, you know, both these two families, but also new upcoming families that want to enjoy this amazing town.
Thank you.
Am I done?
Those are, those that signed up to testify. Is there anyone here? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Denise LeBeever, 6706 Norsalvia Way, Meridian, Idaho. Anyhow, I do have some, sorry, I do have some concerns about this. First, starting with the application, where it was instructed that if planning to request a step up in density, do so ASAP. There's been talks about step ups, there's talks about raising the bar in our community, and this application comes in at 11.5 with a fence around an open, open area. So, you know, if they do want to come in, just ask them to raise the bar. As far as going back through, when we're going back through and we're talking about the step up, the justification for it is really smaller lot, smaller lot sizes. But they've referenced in here Burlingame subdivision. I believe that was already annexed as Incline Village, and it was annexed as an R4. Once again, as she stated, across the street is a R4 subdivision, a church, a church, and it was originally annexed for Burlingame as an R4, which they later rezoned. In here, in the application, when we go back and look at the staff report, we have a school right now that has a capacity of 650. We have enrolled students of 660. We haven't even counted the Burlingame into this, and already we're over capacity in the elementary school. Not to mention the road, we're going to end up having a regional Costco's on that, that's using that road, a hospital, and we're already bypassing 10 Mile to use Black Cat because of how busy it is. In addition to that, there's a reference in here of a Fuller Park, but there's a break in the sidewalk on Black Cat to use the 10 Mile Creek Park, so it's not really safe. But the one that I object to in here in the staff report is the fact that we come back in here and we reference a comprehensive plan that it's being changed. There, I said on the steering committee, as you guys know, and this has not been approved. As a matter of fact, there are objections by residents that said on that committee to the flume, as well as some very vocal objections to the deterioration of open space, as well as the identity of neighborhoods. So respectfully, if you do move this forward, I respectfully ask that you ask them to come and raise the bar. And a tot lot, and a fence around, and irrigation holding pond, a required sidewalk, and where are the drainage at that's in there? We just want them to up the game, to come back in and have neighborhoods that will last into our future. And this doesn't... And this doesn't meet the need of affordable housing. This is, this is right in there at your more expensive housing. We're not talking housing that's two hundred and fifty, that our normal first-time buyers can afford. So I'm not opposed to it, I just really want you to put some thought into it, and if you do wanna approve it, ask them to up their game. And you know what, a, a turning lane is not a bad idea, giving everything that we're have happening, it's gonna back up traffic to turn into that subdivision.
Thank you, Denise.
So, that's it.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Denise, can you articulate, uh, an example of what would constitute stepping up the game in a project like this? What specific direction would you give that would improve and satisfy that concern?
More open space. I really think you're, you're really building these for families. You've got your park that's down there that's not connected yet. One of the issues that I have that I see when you're out driving around is there's a need for bigger lot sizes, because people can't even put their trampolines in their backyards. You know, those big trampolines? I see 'em kinda Kelly Wonker, you know, and there's a need. I, I, I especially enjoyed having my children play in my backyard. You know, I'm concerned about that shrinking.
Madam Mayor, is open, any other example other than additional open space that you think satisfies that concern?
Well, the turning lane would be helpful, because you're gonna back up traffic. But one of the things, one of the big concerns I have is making sure that we don't continually take away our open space and come in and meet the bare minimum. You know, yes, it does have a tot lot in it. Smile, yes. But, you know, we need to up the game, and we need to make it livable for people.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Madam.
And on this, it's showing a picnic shelter too, and I don't remember seeing that in the packet, in, in the text, but it's showing on the drawing, so I guess I'll ask the applicant for more clarification. So that does add another amenity that's not just a tot lot. Picnic shelter, pathways, this is some green area where probably the drainage is too, but...
I, I, I'm just really concerned that we have neighborhoods that will survive the test of time, and it's a place that you can adequately come in and park, you can't see where the driveways are in here, but some of the neighborhoods that we're developing now, you can't even have guests over and have them park in the street. If you do have parking in the street and you're blessed enough to be able to park, you can't, if people are parked on the street, it's really hard to navigate that street. You know, and that, I'm really concerned about it. So...
Interesting.
Any further questions? Thank you. Any other testimony?
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Uh, my name is Pamela, I live in Boise, three eight eight one North Thirty-Ninth Street.
Pamela, what's your last name?
Rod, excuse me, Rogers.
Rogers, thank you.
And I came to Boise in two thousand nine, I've been in property management since I came here, and prior to that, even in Texas. Um, just a side note here for me personally, driving two hours to work every day was not a big deal, you, it's what we did. And Eagle Road now, I think, is just as bad, it's like I compare it to some of the places in Houston. But, the only thing I really would like to say is I know that the Treasure Valley, and I love Boise, Meridian, um, I came here to be with my daughter and her first grandchild after my parents passed, um, and it's grown exponentially just since two thousand nine. I've read in numerous publications that by twenty forty, the whole Treasure Valley's gonna be about a million people. And what I've encountered in property management, when I first came here, um, and I started with a smaller company, so it was a pioneer effort, uh, which has been really fun to grow with them, and, you know, we only had a handful of properties, but back then, I was pulling teeths to get tenants. Now, I'm getting fifty to a hundred phone calls, depending on even the time of the year, for every vacancy I have. The supply and demand is overwhelming, we do not have enough housing or rentals for people coming in. So I am very much in favor of the high-density, um, proposal, or rezoning, I should say. And, we, it's my understanding from the developer, these are not all high-end homes, it could be first-time homebuyers. Um, I may be wrong, but that was my understanding. And we need a lot of that, we need more of that, and, um, I'm, I, I just see it every day, I'm at a loss. I mean, even now, in the off-season, I'm still getting probably twenty calls a day. I'm so sorry, I don't have anything, it's just, and also, the, you know, the, the, um, the rental prices have gone out the wazoo too, so a lot of people are wanting to buy instead of pay those high rents. So, I am personally acquainted with the, uh, the lot, excuse me, the laws over there, um, and, uh, the realtors, but I just wanted to speak on behalf of property management, because I know we're all feeling this crunch time, and, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Kent Blake, and I live at forty-nine twenty West Cherry Lane, and five acres of this proposed project belong to me. And I'd just like to bring up some key points that I've heard that seem to be an objection over the last two meetings that I've sat through. First, just to go back a little bit in history, it was just several years ago that I had the same five-acre parcels before the city council. We went through planning and zoning, it was all approved, um, and it came to the city council, because at that time, I wanted to make two lots out of my five acres. And after we've gone through all the process, it was denied by the city council at that time. So, we've waited a lot of years, and now, fast forward to today, now it's just the opposite, a lot of the objection is it's too dense and that. Well, um, my property does, in the north side, connect to the Burlingame subdivision that was just approved not long ago, which is the higher density. And, uh, so I, I think from that standpoint of view, it's perfect for that kind of a, uh, an arrangement. Other, another point that has been brought up a lot is the safety of the area, and we really haven't stressed the fact of what this project brings to the, to this, uh, as far as improving the safety. Currently, there's about a hundred feet of sidewalk that, you know, are right by the, the lights on the corner, but once this project's done, it will add several hundred feet of sidewalk, probably close to three football-length filled of sidewalks, plus the improvements, the landscaping that goes along with that, with the sidewalks. So I think it will add to the safety, not detract to from it. Another point has been brought up, that schools, well, just this year, the Compass Charter School opened their brand-new facility just a half-mile away from my, my house. And in the near future, the Ojaihe High School is going to be opened. The schools are, I'm sorry, the schools are coming to help support this. Uh, the other thing is, it, all the utilities that are necessary for this project to go forward are right on Black Cat. It's not gonna take any taxpayer dollars to further this project, it's ready to go, the impact fees will come in once it's developed. And the final point I would like to just stress is that this is a small little development, eight point seven nine acres. In my mind, I can't think of something that would be a better fit to fill in this, these two parcels of land in Meridian. There are other things that could happen, it could be a big field full of weeds, I mean, a lot of things could happen, but this really, the way it's planned, I think the developer and the planner has put a lot of thought and effort into it, and it will really add to the character, the nature, and fit in with the surrounding, um, character of what's already there. So, to me, it's the right thing to happen here. And I know those that object, I hope you just kinda reconsider and look at the whole picture.
Thank you.
This really is worth, worthwhile, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional testimony? Okay?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, Jane Suggs, representing the Millbrae subdivision. And this is really part of the process that I really like, because everybody gets to come and say something about a project, and I, that's, that's a really great thing about our process. I don't have a whole lot to add, other than a few, few things that came up. Again, we've talked about this property, it's pretty much surrounded by development, um, and the step-up has been used in the past, as recently as last November, for the Burlingame subdivision. Yes, it was originally a different subdivision, but it was R four, then they came in and used the step-up to rezonate to R eight. Um, a lot of talk about the open space, and I can appreciate that. Um, the actual open space, because there's actual open space, and then there's your coded usable, or what you call affected open space, I think, um, it's about an acre and a half out of that eight point seven nine acres is actual open space, it's not designated for lots. But some of that, like buffers, are not already included in that usable open space, and the eleven and a half percent did not include the small pieces above. So that's an additional open space, it's not part of the calculation of usable open space. So even though it will be landscaped, and it will have a bench along the street in front, and we haven't actually calculated the loc, the size of the irrigation pond, but it could be very small, and only the irrigation pond will be surrounded by a fence, as requested by P and Z. Um, so we have quite a bit more open space than what is shown, um, in the eleven and a half percent. Um, as far as housing, you'll see that the smaller houses are in the center, they're the ones that are adjacent to the open space, so that's, when you have a smaller home and a smaller lot, um, that's perfect for first-time homebuyers who may not need a yard, um, also because there's tot lot and picnic facilities there. We actually have redesigned the stormwater management, so, and some of these, it looks like you have dotted lines, we've actually talked to the engineer, he's gotten the geotech, so it looks like that stormwater man, that stormwater detention area will be infiltrated, so it'll be underground, so now we can, um, put more landscaping in of those open spaces, and there'll be open spaces that won't necessarily be depressed, like you see. I mean, those are very nice spaces, because they fill up with water occasionally, not much here, but, um, but now the, that won't necessarily be the case, because we'll be using underground infiltration for those spaces, which is a good thing. Um, as Mr. Blake said, uh, the utilities are all right there. There will be, no, we just talked about another project, whether we have to extend utilities, utilities are right there for extension right into the subdivision. And, um, I'm not the builder, um, we submitted bill, um, some examples from a couple of builders, we think that we probably could have some of these homes at less than three hundred thousand, I know that doesn't sound like a first-time homebuyer, but with two professional folks, um, we hope to get to that, and, and you know, that's a difficult thing right now, and just having housing at all in our bustling cities is a great thing. And, you know, we're talking about adding several, um, I guess, hundreds, if not thousands of homes every year, trying to do that to our valley, to allow people to have someplace to live. So any home that we build is a good thing for working with our housing crisis that we're going through right now, and probably will be for many years in the future. Um, I believe we satisfied all the concerns we had with ACHD, as we were asked to do at the last city council meeting, and again, if you have questions about that, I'd be happy to talk to you about that, or respond to any other questions you might have about the project. Again, very respectfully request that you approve the Millbrae subdivision, the annexation, the zone to R eight, and the subdivision as conditioned, that we agree with all the conditions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Madam.
Jane, so was there a picnic shelter, or is there not?
There is a picnic shelter.
Okay.
There's picnic shelter and a tot lot, we always like to have a place where the kids can play, and then the moms can sit underneath some sort of shelter in the sun, 'cause that's generally when they're out there, so it'll be a nice place to have some sort of picnic ability there, yeah.
Don't forget about the dads, we like to play too.
Oh, yeah. Well, if you must. We'll put the, I was gonna say, I'm putting that over on another section, I don't know, frisbee, I don't know, smoke cigars, anyway.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, over here in the fire department side.
Joe.
Uh, Jane, can you make sure that if this does get approved, that fourteen-foot wide asphalt needs to be twenty feet wide for the fire engine?
Yes, it will be, and in our revised plat, but not shown on this landscape plan, because one of the conditions is prior to the final plat, we submit a new landscape plan, but on the new plat, we do show it as a twenty-foot, and some landscaping, um, beyond that. So that's our emergency access down to Cherry Lane, because we can't have a full access. It will also serve as a really nice connection, and again, just less than a half a mile down the street is the new park. So that's some, that'll be a great way to get people, without having to go all the way around, they can go right to the park that way.
Hey, any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Jane, you've been doing this for a long time, really well in this valley, so I'm gonna challenge you with a question, um, maybe broader in this project, but this project implicates it. Do you think that in the city of Meridian, there is a maximum number of new dwelling units or, or building permits, talking residential, a maximum amount that can be issued to maintain our existing levels of service? Is there, is there some cap to that?
I'm probably not the right person to ask, answer that question, but you've got a sewer expert over there who's probably determined exactly what that is for the future growth of Meridian, and that's what your comprehensive plan...
Here, here's where, where I'm getting at, is, is, because I ask you, because you've been planning for a long time, if, if a community like Meridian, for example, tried to bring on twenty thousand new building permits within a year, residential, probably absurd, probably more than, than what we could handle to maintain levels of service. Does that seem like a fair conclusion? Or do you know? Or have an, have an opinion on it?
I, that's such a loaded question. Level of service for our streets, level of service for our sewer, level of service for our schools, level of service for, yeah, twen- twen, you're not, you don't have enough people in your city government to give out twenty thousand building permits in a year. I mean, Kuna's out there doing a couple of thousand, and, and they're, yeah, and they're growing faster, I mean, I think, so, I mean, it's, um...
It's a tough question.
It, I, I don't know how to answer your question, because it's so loaded, I'm trying to figure, are you saying that, is there an unlimited number of units that we'll build in Meridian?
So here's the, Madam Mayor, here's the challenge, that, and I don't know the answer to it either.
Okay, well, good.
But, but I, but I believe there's a number. And one of the challenges when we review annexations is we look at it on a micro level, and we look at project-specific, or at least we're directed to try and do that by a lot of the input we get, which makes total sense. And, and you've, might have been caught up in some of this concern, that on a micro level, to this project specific to it, it may meet the standards and be appropriate, but some of our considerations on a larger scale is, is there some maximum absorption rate that our community needs to be aware of with this tremendous growth in order to maintain levels of service? And that's a question probably broader than your project by itself. But when we look and make policy considerations to determine any annexation is in the best interest of the city, to bring this into the Meridian family and provide all the services, each project standing alone has a very finite number and a smaller impact, right? Forty-one units here, relatively small compared to the city, but we have probably over ten thousand platted, approved parcels in our city. None of that's your fault or concern necessarily, but some of the challenge that I think I might have posed to you a few weeks ago, might have been more focused on this concern, that I think there is some broader cap, and none of us know what it is. So when we talk about step-ups, and the impact of step-up, it's only forty-one units now, it's smaller, it seems like it's really small impact, but at least for me, what gives me some pause is the bigger policy consideration, trying to step back from a project just by itself, and, and trying to articulate a bigger policy decision on a, a step-up here that might be problematic, it's problematic because of this larger concern. And, and in fairness to an applicant like yourself, if I had that concern, I think you're, you're entitled to know that. So I could articulate, here's why I find the step-up to be a fatal flaw, because it doesn't satisfy these broader concerns. And I think that's a unique consideration in annexation, because it's that, you know, consensual decision to sort of get married with the city. That's the reason that I asked that question, and I didn't expect there to be an answer.
Well, good.
I, I wish you had one, 'cause I don't.
Uh, I guess, part of the issue is, and we wouldn't have brought this if we didn't work with the staff, who indicated, and that we're very close to going to Planning and Zoning Commission with a new comprehensive plan... Commission with a new comprehensive plan revision, and this land is shown as medium density in the new comprehensive plan. So the issue is, we, this will be no step-up, once that plan is approved. So we didn't think it was necessary to wait until that happened. It's that way, because, and it's appropriate that way, in this particular, on this particular site, maybe more so than the ones you've already used step-up on, because it's that hard corner. Larger lots are not necessarily appropriate at a corner like this, where you have two arterials. That's generally where you put your density, not interior, but not, but you do it at the harder corners. We talked about, a little bit about that last time, is that that's sort of the appropriate location in planning, where you would put your density at these, what I call, hard corners. So in some places, I think there's one, let's see. So I'm looking at this map, City Limits and Zoning, and we're going for the purple zone, and you'll see all the purple zones. So obviously, in some of that area, and I haven't checked every one, to see what the comp plan said, but mostly, a lot of your comp plan had a lower density in the lots of these. I mean, we're showing purple there at these corners, especially at some of these harder corners. So that R8 seems to be the appropriate thing. You're right, I don't have an answer for your, how many units should we approve in the next year? But I do believe that this is the right project, at the right time, in the right location. And there's no reason not to. Utilities are there, it is, it's ready. I mean, the property is ready for development there, so, I mean, and it is surrounded by development. And I don't know a reason why you would not annex it in, if you've got annexation land on, to the west of it, and to the south of it, and to the north of it, and to the east of it. So, except for one parcel, who may or may not develop their property. So if you're surrounded, it's an infill, it's an enclave, almost.
So I have a question.
Sure.
It's not so squishy.
Yeah.
It seems that we're really transitioning away from these retainage lots. It just lacks imagination, Jane. To have a retainage lot with a fence around it, and many of the retainage lots we've seen are mosquito traps, and I just, that one baffles me.
Okay, when you say retain, this isn't stormwater retainage. All of the stormwater will be underground now. This is an irrigation, it's a requirement of the irrigation district. Well, there's no irrigation, so we won't pressurize irrigation, so we have to build a pond on the property. So that irrigation, that will have water in it during the irrigation season.
And will it move?
Will it move?
The water?
The level will change whenever you're irrigating, and then it'll fill back up, so, yeah.
Do you have aeration, or do you have that water moving, instead of just staying stagnant? Even though it changes in elevation, that doesn't-
But it fills up, I mean, in the summer months, when you're using it, it'll be filling up daily, it'll be moving daily. So there'll be water coming out of it for irrigation, and then there'll be filling it up with, from the irrigation. It's a requirement, there's not a way to do those really underground. I think you're talking about retainage, meaning the stormwater. And that's the stormwater stuff, that sometimes, you know, the lower those swells, and they have rocks and things, and sometimes the water just kind of stands there for a while, so, but this is a, unless it's like a pond, this will be more like an amenity pond. And the reason there's a fence around it, is because the P&amp;Z said they wanted a fence around it. For safety, we were going to do a four-foot fence, so it keeps the kiddos out, and keeps, you know, that kind of thing. But it's not gonna be a tall, ugly, like, wired fence or something. So it's just a safety thing, because it's going to be more than probably a foot or two deep. It might be five feet deep, and water comes up and down, so, during the, and that's an irrigation pond versus the retainage ponds that you're talking about. Those will be underground, so they won't be-
You don't have any kind of aeration component to it, even with the movement up and down? It's still a nice mosquito feature.
Well, if you want to, we can talk to the irrigation district, and see if there's something that we can do to make that happen. I know, I'm not a professional in this design, but I can find out, the irrigation district might allow us to do something like that. I'm not sure if they will, because it's something we're doing for them, for the irrigation. But if you want to make a condition of approval, that we talk to irrigation about doing something to keep mosquitoes down from the pond, that's fine.
Any other questions from counsel? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any further information needed? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Move to close the public hearing on item 7C.
Second.
A motion and second, close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Having heard an immense amount of information, twice, about a very small, less than nine-acre development, I move that we approve H-2019-0066, and include all of staff's recommendations in their staff report, and require that if the irrigation district allows for it, and there's a means to properly aerate the pond, to mitigate mosquitoes, that that be required to be built, should they allow it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I think we're back here, it's like deja vu all over again, because counsel couldn't come to an agreement, we didn't have a tiebreaker.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think Councilmember Burton had said, you know, like, almost got another chance at this, you know, go talk to ACHD, and you get another shot. And my comments were pretty clear, this was pretty minimal. And I would have hoped that the developer and their representative team would have taken a look at this project and say, let's level this up. And that didn't happen. So, you know, I think our counsel has always been really supportive, working with development to get to the win. We're happy to continue, allow further conversations to occur, personally, because I don't, I don't take denials lightly. There isn't anything here that's changed, that has moved me to be supportive. I think it's a missed opportunity to have done something a little bit better. I think Denise, in her testimony, talked about leveling up, or kind of improving, and I think there's a host of things. Appreciate Councilmember Borton asking the question. I think there's a host of things that they could have done to make this a better fit for our community. So I'm not supportive of the motion. I won't be voting in favor.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, it, being that this is a, oh, Joe, the number is 2,873. This is an infill piece of property. And I do appreciate leveling up, and not being a minimalist. And I don't really see this as a minimalist, and I think that with infills, it is a little bit more difficult to be as creative as you can with larger pieces, and that, I calculated the open space, the actual open space, and I don't even know if that includes the pond, is it 17% if you include the, and qualified? It has more amenities than it needs to have. So it may not be the most beautiful project in the world, but it's, we're working with a little, small, little piece of infill property. And it wouldn't be even open to a step-up, if this was not already going to be the loom level of service. So I'm, I don't see why not to approve it.
Okay, any other discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Okay. Well, since I did look at the record, I am hung up on our policy. I know that there's been step-ups, but not since we started into our comprehensive plan update, and we did say that we would not consider step-ups. I've been pretty firm in that. There's no guarantee that this will be designated what is in the plan until it goes through. It would have been probably a different conversation if this was two months later, or three months later, or after the beginning of the year, with the new council, with the new, with the new plan. But I think that the other council members who are voting against it are trying to stay true to it. I also think that we do need entry-level housing, but I don't think we have to settle. And there are some safety concerns in this area. This is a small piece of land, I don't think it should share the burden of the entire cost of a turning lane. But there are some safety aspects in this area that discussion needs to be had on turning lanes, for getting, turning movements out of the lane of traffic, and providing a safer venue for it. So I will be voting no. So this motion fails.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I move we deny item 7C, application H-2019-0066.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Okay? Well, I have no motion. I do need action from the counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
So the question I had posed to Jane, which was meandering perhaps, or mushy, I guess I could pose to all of counsel, if they know it, or maybe our planning staff. Is there, is there a maximum number of dwelling units our city can absorb on an annual basis, to maintain our levels of service? Whether that's streets, schools, public safety, water, sewer? If there is, what is it? I don't know. What it is? I don't know if anyone else knows. No? No? Not the number of permits that have been approved, the number of units our city can absorb, X number of units on an annual basis. It's not 20,000, right? More than zero. But there's some, there's some figure, and not all communities are, are lester cursed with extraordinary annual growth. And there's one reason why everyone wants, a lot of people want to move here, is we do have these phenomenal levels of service in all departments. So what happens, an application like this gets stuck in the process, and we seem to get stuck every five months on something, where it's that concern, at least for me, that catches you. Each project by itself is small. Year over year, on a large scale, it's four years down the road, and your levels of service of fire response time, police ability to interact in our community, all of that slowly So here's my concern. I don't know what the number is, but I would like a tool that would help articulate, based on some assumptions, some absorption rate, that the city can absorb X number of units on an annual basis. That's all right. I think that would be very helpful. It'd be very difficult to do. So, Madam Mayor, as we go forward, I'm changing my vote. And I'm going to do, I'm gonna be, I'm supportive of this project, because this, this concern doesn't necessarily need to, to tie up this particular project. But I want to have some tool that will help articulate, and we could utilize it going forward, our community can roughly absorb X number of homes. No, it's more than zero, right? We can grow a certain level. Residential, commercial square foot, industrial square foot, it's not unlimited. We can't absorb 20,000 houses. The demand is there, and on an individual project basis, there'll be requests to do so. And I don't fault developers and landowners from trying to do so. The problem is, it's 2026, and our police and fire response time, and our, our ability to, to plan new wells for water service, all lags behind, and we're all gone. I'm on my soapbox just for a titch. We're all gone. When you see communities get caught, that's what happens. It's back in 2019. So here's my, there's not an answer for it today, and it's not gonna be easy. But I'm supportive of this project. Come January, if, if there's not some tool that will help guide this on a macro level, so we could say, here's why step-ups don't work, on a big scale, here's why we use DAs to ration out building permits in some manner that we could absorb it effectively, then I'm not supportive of annexations. I'm done. Because people like this project gets caught every now and then, with this concern we're not talking about. So what's the tool that makes me feel comfortable? Oh, we can absorb 950 new units each year, this fits into that model, we're good. Or if we're gonna deny an application, we can say, here's why, we can't absorb it, it doesn't fit. We are not gonna lower our standards in our community, even though the demand is there.
Mr. Borton. I think this is a great conversation, that we talked about in our strategic plan, and growth tools, and maybe better, better used than-
Sure.
-than right now.
Fair enough. And I'll stop. But here's, fairness to the applicant, and to the developer, so they understand my position, I'm gonna support this project, I'm gonna vote for it, but I want it to be pretty clear, the concern, come first of the year, if there's not something that we could utilize, then just for me personally, I'm not going forward with annexations, unless I can feel comfortable our levels of service aren't gonna be jeopardized. That's all. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Mr. Borton hit on something that's really important, and the decisions we make today will dramatically affect, you know, levels of service and other things, et cetera, in the future dramatically. And I think the reason why I struggle with this, this project so much, is because it's just a lack of creativity with it. I remember when I was on my, one of the first couple applications, when I was on Planning and Zoning Commission, a long time ago. And I was inexperienced, and I, and I wasn't familiar with the process as much as I am now. But my feeling hasn't changed in regard to these irrigation ponds, and, and stormwater drain ponds. It's almost like we're trying to, you know, put lipstick on a pig a little bit, and let's throw a little bench out there, you know, make it look like it's an amenity, you know? I've, I've seen these things, no one's gonna sit around them, you know, they're terrible. And then, and that's what bugs me about this project, is that it's just, it's just a, with all due respect, it's a terrible project. It's, 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 it's just a, it's a me-too project that, that doesn't move the bar. And in Meridian, we're gonna have to come to a time where we're gonna have to make some tougher decisions, in regard to the, the type of quality that we're, we're, you know, that we're approving. I get that it meets the, all of the, I get that it meets code, I get that it, you know, it meets the minimum qualifications, but going forward, my goodness, I think it's important to, just, you know, like Denise said, just raise that bar a little bit, you know what I mean? And, and provide a little bit more open space, and not say that that open space, although it's not usable, is an irrigation pond, because that's not open space to me. It's, it's just not. So, I get it, but it's-
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri, are we providing anything new that this, we closed the public hearing, and now we're having some interesting conversations. I just would like to have you weigh in. Are we okay so far?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council?
It's just not. So I get it, but it's
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri, are we providing anything new that this? We closed a public hearing, and now we're having some interesting conversations. I just would like to have you weigh in. Are we okay so far?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council? I don't know. In the legal world, I think Councilmember Borton will understand, this is what I would consider to be dicta. It's interesting information. It doesn't have any relevance to the decision in front of you. It's talking about something in the future that may be relevant, but it doesn't really drive your discussion or your decision today. I think it's good information. I think it's helpful. I don't mean that to sound disrespectful, that it's not, but it, no, it's not detracting from your conversation. Until you make an action, I can't tell you whether or not it has any impact.
I'm just concerned that we've kind of lost our focus on the application, and that's what I'm asking you to make a decision on.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
To that point, to Mr. Burton's point, I've got an irrigation pond in my neighborhood. I've never considered it an amenity. I think probably that seven-year-old kids that go play in the mud find it an amenity, but I'm sure their parents certainly do not. I don't see any enjoyment that comes from a community if you call an irrigation pond an amenity, whether there's a bench there or not. So I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Burton, and I'm in agreement.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
So for four years, I've been here and week in, week out, we've said, oh, we need to step it up, we need to do this, we need to do that. Well, it's this board that makes those decisions. Staff has done an incredible job trying to guess what it is that we want, and we've made teeny little adjustments as they've been able to kind of think, okay, I think most of the council likes this idea, you know, single level, not having to worry so much about articulation, whatnot, along our two-year-old roads, whatever. But it's us that make that decision, and instead, we wait until there's an application in front of it, and then we throw a fit saying, no, try better. We set the standards. An applicant applies to the standards or better, comes here, spends a whole bunch of money to get to this point, for us to say, take a hike, try again. I can't tell you how grateful I am to Councilman Borton changing his mind to, especially on such a small project, to not have forced them to get to this point, met all of our standards, and say, go away again. So if standards need to change, we need to change those standards now or four years ago before people keep spending just a fortune to be able to get in front of us for us to make a decision based on information we received on Friday.
Madam Mayor.
Is it appropriate, even though my motion failed, can you make the same exact motion?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, people who voted in the prevailing side, someone from that side needs
Oh, they have, Joe has to make the motion.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor. We're all on a soapbox tonight. I just want to kind of echo what Councilwoman Palmer just said. I have been sitting here for almost six years. I'm leaving, and for at least five years, I have been saying, raise the standards. Why are we not raising the standards? And we do this, and then we beat up applications because they're minimal, but they meet our minimum standards. This has three amenities. It only is required to have one, and the irrigation pond is not counted as one of those amenities. So that's just there. But I'm looking at you three that are sticking around, change the minimum standards. And if you want maybe less load on the development, change the minimum standards a lot. There's one way to slow it down a little bit, well, make some really nice subdivisions. Okay. Before a tie. Oh, you can't. Joe has
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I'll make a motion. It sounds like that's where it needs to come from. I'm going to move that we approve item 7C, H-2019-0066, to include the, all the conditions of approval, including those represented at tonight's public hearing. Anyone second?
Second, yeah.
Anyone? And Ms. Mylum, second?
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor. Did that include the aeration mosquito abatement?
It's not going to happen.
Mr. Clerk, will you call?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
The As have it. That is the process of government. Have good discussion, and thank you for joining us tonight. Okay. Item 7D is a public hearing for hands-free driving ordinance. It's under consideration, and Chief, or Mr. Neri?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, a few months ago, you had a discussion about having a hands-free driving ordinance within the city. You have an ordinance on your agenda that we have drafted. We have based this on other cities around the state that have had these types of ordinances. Pocatello, Idaho Falls, Haley are the ones that come to mind. That was the basis of this ordinance. It is a discussion draft, so it is done for a first reading. It can be amended, it can be rescheduled, it can be, it can be vacated, whatever your desire. One of the things that was left out, because it was a discussion, was what level of penalty you think would be appropriate if you were to pass this ordinance. Infractions have been discussed. There are other types of offenses to deal with driving that are misdemeanors, reckless driving and inattentive driving in the state. I want to help clarify a little for the record. I know that the council knows this. You hear a lot of terms being used that distracted driving is the right way to address this type of driving behavior. There is no such thing as distracted driving in the state of Idaho. There's only reckless and inattentive, and those have specific types of behaviors related to reckless and not quite so articulated types of behavior related to inattentive driving. But those two exist, they're both misdemeanors. If it's a serious enough case, reckless could also be a felony, but that's not really the discussion point. Discussion was to, this could be an infraction. Under the city code, if you don't designate what level of infraction fine it is, it's a $25 fine plus court cost. I can give you the math, but it's about 60 bucks is what the total is. If you want to designate higher fines, you have up to $300 in the Idaho code to designate an infraction offense. So that's some opportunity you have for this ordinance to have that conversation. But the ordinance is in front of you. The language that's in the ordinance has actually been reviewed by a district court in the state in the 5th District, which is the area east of here encompassing the Twin Falls-Haley area, and it was based on Haley's ordinance, which this language is very similar to. And that district court determined that this was compliant with the Idaho code. It was not in conflict with the Idaho code, and it was upheld by that district court. So that's the only example we have currently in our state in regards to this type of ordinance. So that's a long-winded introduction to the chief. He has the probably more relevant data that you're interested in in regards to driving behaviors and in law enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Chief Levy, thank you for joining us.
Madam Mayor, council, it's kind of ironic that on my way home this evening to prepare to come back here, I almost was taken out by a person that was on their phone. So I think that's a sign. The growth in Meridian has been, has seen unprecedented levels sometime, and it does not appear to be slowing in the foreseeable future. The roadway infrastructure cannot keep up with the pace of growth we are experiencing. Two end results we are seeing on our roadways are increased crashes and road rage incidences. We've seen a 37% increase in crashes on that Chindin corridor alone. Many of these are because people are not paying attention while driving their vehicles. In May, I proposed a hand-free ordinance for the city of Meridian. That idea came about after seeing several cities doing the same thing after multiple years of trying to get the Idaho legislature to make this a state law. This past year at the state level, not only did we not get a state law to curb the problem, but there was a bill proposed taking the right away from cities and counties for making their own ordinances. That also did not pass. There are many arguments out there that try to sway against city ordinances or even state law. The first is that the state is going to do it, so why should we, why shouldn't we wait for the state? I do not share the confidence, based upon my legislative experience, that we can afford to wait any longer. There is an argument that there are other distractors people are doing while in their vehicles, such as applying makeup, shaving, reading, and eating, just to name a few. These have been true for many decades, and it still does happen. But it is not frequent like we see with phones in the hands of drivers. One just needs to watch the drivers on our roadways to see where the biggest problem lies. Another argument is that there are already laws on the books to address these problems. First must we, first, we must look at what laws do exist, and then we also have to look at how they're interpreted by the prosecutors and by the courts. Reckless driving is perhaps the most serious driving offense that deals with poor driving. This is a misdemeanor which requires beyond a reasonable doubt for us to prove in court. And it really has to do with some very serious and dangerous driving. Also, it has to encompass at least three moving violations: speeding, aggressive driving, and such. This is a pretty serious charge. Another example would be drag racing, driving on a sidewalk, or speeding through a parking lot with crowded people. Attentive driving, inattentive driving is a lower level of reckless. It's still a misdemeanor, and still requires us to prove beyond a reasonable doubt, but it really, in essence, is an after-the-fact violation. And what I mean by that is you must cause the danger, and then you get a ticket. We see that often in Meridian, where someone will actually be not paying attention, being distracted, cause a crash, and then it's appropriate for us to issue a citation. That is not how we want to work things. We want people to make the proper choices before they get into crashes. The third violation that currently is on the books addresses texting while driving. This is one that Meridian took a lead on, not only on a city ordinance level, but then also on a statewide level. Took many, many years for this state to actually adopt this. And in this current law, there's a lot of exceptions that allows people to have their phones in their hands. So many exceptions that it's really difficult for us to prove, in fact, what that person was actually doing while on the phone. We figured it out, and we have written 198 citations for texting while driving last year. I think you have the stats in front of you. We forward them. I'm not sure exactly what they are for this year. I do have in front of me if you need them. But it's not just people texting on their phone that's a problem. It's people that are on their phones that really think that they're driving quite well and have no idea that they're crossing the center line, or that they're slowing people up, or frankly, today, the guy that I just mentioned was on his phone with GPS and had it handed out in front of him like this, and was busy trying to stare it in as he's driving down the road and missed the stop sign. Now, that wasn't intentional, but if he wouldn't have been on the phone, it wouldn't have been a problem. The other thing that we're finding is that it's creating a lot of road rage incidences because people just aren't paying attention. They think that they have to slow down. Just yesterday, we had one where the person was slowing down for a school bus that was in the opposite lane just because she was on the phone and wasn't paying attention. So the school bus slowed down, she slowed down, the person behind her got upset, started tailgating her, then we started having brake checking, and then they got out in the middle intersection and started having an argument as I was pulling up. So it's juvenile behavior from adults because of a phone. People will say that they only text while stopped at a stoplight or at a stop sign, and we commend them for texting, for not texting while in the vehicle, while the vehicle's in motion. But this is another leading cause for the road rage incidences that we're experiencing. Many people have said, I'm a safe driver while I'm on the phone. I would challenge them and ask, are you a safe driver, or are you a lucky driver? At a recent distracted driving presentation by a father who lost his daughter to texting while driving, he discussed how unsafe it is to be on the phone while we're driving, and equated it to disrespectful driving, not distracted driving. This statement resonated with me because one of our core values in Meridian is respect. I strongly urge you to pass this ordinance because it is, not only is it the right thing to do, it's the right time to do it, and it's for the right reasons. If we do not write a single ticket because people chose to do the right thing, then we all have won. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
This has been what I've thought a lot about. It's an interesting, it's a complicated issue in regard to role of government versus existing laws. Also taking into consideration maybe doing a better job enforcing our current laws. And speaking with folks who have reached out to me, my question to you, Chief, is, is there a way in which we can better utilize and enforce our current laws without having to create more laws to solve this problem? I know you just spent five minutes talking, but I just wanted, it's just a question that comes up time and time again when people approach me about
The simple answer is no.
Okay, why?
I think I just
I mean, like, main talking points?
So what would, what, Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, I already covered the laws that currently out there, reckless driving. Obviously, we're not going to be able to use reckless driving.
No.
We have texting while driving, and we can't use that for people that are on the phones because they have that exception. The only thing that we could use would be inattentive driving. The courts have said this is an after-the-fact violation where you have to actually have to do something, have some sort of outcome, as in crashing
Yeah, or
before we can write you that ticket. If I go write every single person that's on the phone an inattentive driving ticket because they were on the phone, every single one of them are going to get kicked out of court, and all it's going to do is clog up the courts. It's not an appropriate law to address what should be a simple decision for people to do the right thing. I know that this city and this state does not like to make laws, and they don't want to have more laws. But unfortunately, we have laws out there for speeding, and we still have speeders. We have laws out there for DUIs, and we still have DUIs. We have laws out there for homicide. We still have homicides. We have to have laws in place to show people and hold them accountable for those behaviors when they make a wrong decision. The nice thing about it is that when that law's on the books, you get somewhere between a 60% and an 80% rate of doing the right thing because it's now a law. If we could have people that would do the right thing and get off their darn phones and not have to do a law, then that's great. But we've watched year after year after year, and it's getting worse, it's getting worse, and it's getting worse. So I challenge all of you, here's a great time for you to sit there and take an action like we've done, six or seven different times when we've had city ordinances on different things that we know has impacted us as a community. We get enough cities that have enough guts to do that, the state will take notice and they'll make it a law. But until then, I think we need to do something here on a local level to not only force our citizens to make those right choices, but to protect those citizens that don't have a choice to make.
So Chief
I was on the soapbox there. Sorry, Joe.
It's contagious.
So, Chief, the proposal would be an infraction and not a misdemeanor?
Madam Mayor, yes, that was our proposal, is that it be an infraction. Currently, I can tell you that under state code, most moving infractions are $90 plus court costs if you decide to take it to court. We don't have an opinion on it. You can decide whatever you want. We just believe that We just believe that it needs to be an infraction to not clog up our courts, but also, and I didn't really cover this, sorry, is that I kept talking about under misdemeanors beyond a reasonable doubt. Under an infraction, it's more likely than not. And so, it's easier to prove, it's easier for someone to contest if they want to contest it. If they are cited, there's less points that go on the record. Reckless driving is four points that goes on the record. I think a moving is, is two points.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Malin.
I apologize, but I have to leave, and I just wanted to throw, I, I love your passion for this, Chief. I could tell it's like, very, very important to you. I can hear it in your voice, and, and I admire that. And I, and I'm supportive most of the way. The, I, still, I think that the part, the only part of this that I am struggling with is when the vehicle is stopped. And I, I just have a really hard time believing that that causes very many accidents if you're at a red light. You might, you might have to be drive for an hour, and if, to be able to just do a quick something at a red light and pay attention and go when the light turns green, I don't see as a major traffic hazard. So, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, and that's the part I'm struggling with.
I had a friend who was rear-ended because she was sitting in a stop sign. The car in front of her moved, she moved, and the car in front of that didn't, because they were on their phone.
They need to be paying attention to the road.
Well, they're not.
They're on their phones.
They're on their phone texting a really quick text before they drive. So, they are stopped.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Malin, I know that you brought that up before, and I, and I, I understand that. One of our biggest problems is not crashes there, it's the road rage incidences, is where people are not paying attention, light turns green, they're not going because they're still engrossed in the phone. But you did talk about crashes. One of the points that we do find where there's crashes is people are in the straight lane at a red light, they're on their phones, they see the, the green turn light go, they think it's green, and they go. So, we do have crashes when they're on the phone because they're not paying attention.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Jeff, appreciate your recommendation, at least in terms of where you'd want to see this classified. You bring up, I think, a good point about road rage, and that's something that, when you first brought this up, wasn't even on my radar to consider. And I started to wonder, do we have laws against road rage? I mean, if, if somebody, I've had this, I mean, I've, I've been hit by a texture, who's, you know, or they were, I had stopped, they were on their phone, boom, into the back of my car. So, I'm sympathetic to that. But I've also seen these road rage incidents, and they're incredibly frightening, even for somebody like me, to see this happen. And so, I'm curious, I appreciate, want to address what we think is, is a big issue. To me also, this road, these instances of road rage are equally concerning as well. I'm just curious what we have on the books, what you and your team have in terms of tools and resources to enforce that and prevent that from happening.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, that's an interesting question, and I never really considered that before. There is no laws on the books that would address a road rage incident if it, it was verbal only. It only, when it escalates to the point of, we've had people pull guns on people.
Yeah, right.
Then that becomes a, an aggravated battery or an aggravated assault, depending on what they do with it. If it's involved in fisticuffs, where they actually get physical, then we have batteries also, and we've had those as well. But if you just want to go and have a dialogue with each other on the roadway and obstruct traffic, I don't know, there might be some obscure code out there, what we could find that could say you can't stop in the roadway, but no, there's not anything that addresses poor human behavior on the roadways unless there's some sort of physical activity.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, Jeff, you know.
Can you pull your?
Sorry. We've all had somebody show us their, their favorite finger, and they've all been willing to kind of swear at us or whatever, you know, as they're driving past. And that part is less concerning to me. The part that I'm concerned about is when people either stop and get out of their vehicle. And, and I don't know if that's a conversation for us. I mean, to me, that is an issue that I would be much more comfortable with addressing first, is what we're doing to stop road rage in our community before we start having a conversation about, about people using their phone while they're stopped at a stoplight. I, part of me thinks we've got really good laws on the books to address issues of people who are using their phone, moving in and out of lanes without signaling, speeding, not stopping. And honestly, I think inattentive driving, to me, it has seemed like the logical place. But I am concerned that the big piece you talked about, that we don't have a plan in place for that, and, and I don't know if it's parallel tracks or separate tracks, but that's a piece that I think is really important that we're working to address.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I guess I would argue back that there's a symptom and there's a root cause. And I believe the root cause is the texting, and a symptom of that is the road rage, not conversely.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Counsel, let's see if we have people signed up.
I'm not going anywhere. I can come back up.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, there are two people signed in, both wishing to testify. First is Brian Leslie.
Good evening. Thank you for waiting for this item. We appreciate you being here. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brian Leslie, and I live at 4647 North Tipton, 83646.
Thank you, Brian.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, first, I want to thank you all for considering this ordinance. As Chief Levey said, I think most cities in Idaho are doing it because of the inaction and the incompetence of our state legislature to deal with it. I ride my bike for transportation, so do my kids, so does my wife occasionally. So, I am viscerally aware of distracted drivers, drivers not paying attention because they kill people like me on a regular basis. My, my daughter rides her bike to Renaissance, and it's about 25 minutes away from our house, and she has to go down Locust Grove, and I tell her, "Ride on the sidewalk," because our bike facilities are inadequate, and somebody gets on their phone, all it takes is three seconds, and they could hit her. These are preventable deaths. Pedestrians and bicyclists have an outsized, they are more at risk than other people in cars. From 2008 to 2017, pedestrian deaths have increased by 35%, whereas motor vehicle deaths have decreased by 5%. Our cars are getting safer, but our pedestrians who are out of cars, and bicyclists who are out of cars, they're more at risk. Cell phones in use over that same period has increased fivefold. Correlation doesn't cause, isn't causation, but, you know, it doesn't take a genius to figure out cell phones are a problem. Again, these are preventable deaths, especially for the vulnerable road users out there. And I, I, like Chief Levey said, the, the books that we have, the laws we have on the books now, they don't specifically address people just looking at their phone. It's only texting. And, I mean, he's the expert. I would listen to him. So, I'd encourage you to pass this ordinance. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One final comment. Madam Mayor, I wanted to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And enjoy your time out of City Hall in retirement.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Brian.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
You can sit down. I just, I want to point out for council, Ryan's on our Transportation Commission, has been a staunch advocate of people who ride bicycles and pedestrians in our community. I appreciate you being here and your service to the community. Yours is a voice, and when you speak up, my ears tune in. I appreciate you being here tonight.
You know, I just recently came back from the Netherlands, and bicyclists have the top priority on the road. And if you go there, you'll understand why. But they don't allow a phone in a hand because of the pedestrian piece, the bicycle piece. I'd invite you to stand on any street corner in our community and just watch drivers and see how many cell phones are in the hands. We did seatbelt safety, and we were watching cars to see how many people were their seatbelts. It became so distracting looking at the number of phones in people's hands, it was hard to keep our teens focused on the seatbelt when all they could see were people using their, their cellphone devices. So, and lastly, go to a, a school zone and watch those crossing guards and those buses, and there are many, many near misses because traffic is watching their phone, not our Mr. Clerk, sorry.
Madam Mayor, next.
Since we're getting used to soapboxes right now.
Jim Nunley is next.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this?
Denise LaFever, 6706 Norseal VOA. And I want to commend you guys for going back through and articulating your ideas, win, lose, or draw. I love to hear what's going on. Thank you. I just have a question. Is the problem mobile cellphone, I mean, the cellphone in your hand, or is it cellphones in general? Because I've seen it both ways. And I personally ask myself the question, is it worth killing myself or somebody else when I go pick up the phone? But, you know, the real question is, is, is there an issue with people talking on cellphones that aren't holding on to it? Because I see that as well. When I'm out driving around, people just aren't going. I really think this is one of those kind of things, though, that you put forward, that maybe it needs to come to a vote, and our residents need to make that determination if it's something they want in their community. It's a pretty big thing. Cellphones are really important. There's different reasons that people are on the phone. I agree, there are issues with it. I do, it's very frustrating when you're sitting in a light, and even if somebody's holding on to a phone or not holding on to the phone, you can tell they're sitting there talking, and they're not going. And so, you're getting more honking on the horn. But I, I do think maybe we should think about sending this one out for vote to the people.
Advisory votes are, it looks like there's a need for legislation to even ask our citizens what they think. So, we just talked about that earlier.
Yeah. Thank you.
But I would agree with you. Any questions for Ms. LaFever? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other thoughts? We would love to hear you weigh in. Imagine there are people sitting in the audience because they were interested in this. Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Since we started this discussion, I've, I've paid closer attention to intersections and people driving down the streets. It's amazing, when you're stopped at an intersection, how many people just automatically go to their cellphones. I'm, I'm not saying it's 100%, and I can't even put a percentage on it, to be honest with you. I would be remiss to, I, I would, I wouldn't be honest with you, the citizens of Meridian that are listening and watching, to put a percentage on it, but it's enough. It is a concern, and I had a daughter that just recently got done with driver's training, and, and she watched the videos, and she watched, she heard what was spoken to, to the class, and it, the dangers of texting and driving or being on your cellphone while driving. And I'm not 100%. I, I would be lying to say that I haven't stopped at a stoplight and checked a quick text, or I have ADD sometimes, and I, and I forget, so if I don't get to it real quick, I feel like I'll forget, so I'll just send off a quick email. And I've been one of those guys that have been honked at, and I wave, "I'm sorry." But it is a problem, and, and I think as a role of, to me, this is, in my personal opinion, it's not an issue of whether the government should get more involved or more relaxed. For me, it's an issue of public safety. And I was elected by the citizens of Meridian to look after the, the safety of, of this city. And when I see people dying, and when I see road rage incidents, when I see inattentive driving, near misses, it, it's, it, it causes concern. And so, those are my thoughts.
Other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Hearing from the public has been really helpful over the last couple of weeks, and I would hope more would have shown up tonight, and maybe this is continued, we'll get more input. But there seems to be two camps of, of individuals.
Right.
Who've asked questions. And, and in one camp, the most common response I get in, in the discussion is, either utilize existing laws.
Right.
Or you have, the, the state should be the solution. Those aren't wrong opinions, but, but both of those opinions are premised upon accepting that it is a problem that deserves a solution. Then the disagreement is only what mechanism do we use to solve it? So, to that camp, I find everyone in agreement that some action needs to be taken, could be taken, to solve it. And very, very few, and very rare, do I hear a comment that it should just be permitted. And some of the metrics that the chief provided, I think, last month, when we talked about the, the financial costs, the economic loss, the, the deaths and injuries that are caused directly by it, it would be, in essence, saying, "I'm okay with that level of crashes and fatalities in my community." And that's an acceptable amount of economic loss in exchange for the liberty to talk on my cell and be distracted. I don't, I don't hear that a lot, so maybe that's, maybe that's because it doesn't really hold a lot of water. So, if everyone's really in the, if, if most common, most common is the argument that utilize existing laws or have the state solve it, to me begs the question, why don't we? So, as we gather more input, I haven't heard the compelling argument that would say distracted or cellphone usage while you drive, we're willing to accept the cost within our community that it clearly provides, that we have the data that we would, in essence, be accepting if we didn't act. So, I found that to be, I guess, an interesting observation when we get public input on this topic. Seems like we have an opportunity to do something.
Well, and two of those three tools that have been bantered around are misdemeanors and not infractions. And the infraction piece, I think, allows some flexibility with our, our law enforcement to talk about it and educate, and I think that's one of the things you did very well when the city council had passed a texting while driving law before the state did. It allowed our police officers the opportunity to, to have the conversations with citizens and, and even then have used their judgment on the level of severity and, and being judicial in, in how they use that tool.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Is it legal to have a dog in your lap while driving? Dogs, babies, I mean, it's, I see that a lot as well. I, I mean, there's a lot of things that we could just pile onto it, but, but this is the, I, I don't know.
The public hearing is about cellphones.
Madam Mayor, to, to that point, I think, here's why that's an interesting question is, intuitively, I'd say it doesn't happen very often and cause economic loss and injury to others. I know we've got data on distracted driving. I'd be open to hear data on crashes caused by dogs in a lap or a baby. I mean, if it's common, it's common, and if there's data out there, great.
I doubt it.
Doubt there's data. So.
Madam, I, I was just asking, because, I mean, this, this was already determined that this was going to pass, and so, I'm just wondering if there's any way we could make it better by maybe adding a few things that obviously happen out there. There's countless dogs hanging out driver windows.
So, Madam Mayor, for that, it's, it's a public hearing, it's a first read, we might continue this to a second read, I don't know what's going to happen, but if anyone in the public or on council wants to articulate. council wants to articulate the reason why the costs that the chief has described for us are ones we should accept, and that non-action is the more appropriate course, and to tell our community that we like that much economic loss and we're okay with people getting hit, then articulate it. I mean, it's a public hearing. I'd love to hear it. I don't know how you make that argument. But if there's an argument to be made, I'm all ears, in consideration of whether or not we should act on this ordinance.
Okay. Any other comments? I mean, we still have an open public hearing. We could keep it open and have the three readings. I'm just looking for direction.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
As it's currently proposed, I am not supportive. I gotta be honest. I am floored that we had two people show up, hop on the internet. Pardon? Oh, sorry. I said I was floored that there's only two people that testified. Hop online on social media and everybody's talking about this. And everybody's an expert. Everybody's got an opinion. My phones rang. I know a lot, many of you have heard from constituents. I have as well on both sides. The fact that only two people, and Denise, I love you. You're here every week. So, I mean, really, we had one person who cared about this issue so much to come down and talk to us. That disappoints me. I received in some of my correspondence with constituents, studies that show that distracted driving is as deadly as drinking while driving. That's a big deal. I don't know if an infraction warrants, if this is as deadly as getting behind the wheel after getting sauced. In fraction doesn't seem correct. So I'm supportive of continuing the public hearing. And I hope we've got our friends from the media here, who I'm sure will do a great story on this. And I hope that if I ever get quoted, that they say, "Come and testify and tell us what you think." Comments on Facebook or Twitter DMs don't count. I want to hear from people who care about this issue enough to come talk to us.
Madam Mayor, City Council.
Mr. Burton.
Thank you. I concur with the chief. And thank you, Councilmember Burton and Councilmember Horton, for bringing up the deaths. As the guy that's been out on the street, cutting these people out of their cars because of the distracted driving, I have a certain 17-year-old girl that is, in my mind, constantly out on Eagle Road, that, so to Councilmember Kavner's point, this can't wait. I'm surprised it's been this long as it is, that nothing has been done. Because the deaths are a tragedy and they can be averted. And hands-free will help. That's the fire department's thoughts.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Members of the Council, I would ask, if the desire is to continue, I have spoken with our prosecuting agency and gotten their feedback. They have made a couple minor suggestions in regards to the definition section that we would correct. As we spoke at the beginning, if the desire is to continue the hearings, I'd like to know what your thoughts are in regards to the punishment. If you're not ready to make that direction tonight, that's fine as well. But that's not even contained currently in the ordinance. It just makes it unlawful, which would put it into a generalized category in the city code and actually would make it a misdemeanor. So I don't know that that's your intent, but just wanted you to be aware that we would still seek that direction on the penalty provision, if this is a desire. In speaking with the prosecuting agency, and this kind of helps maybe Councilmember Burton's question about is the laws that we currently have adequate, I was a prosecutor for a long time, but I haven't been one for a long time. In my experience, you would not get a judge to agree, under the way inattentive driving is written in the state code, to cite somebody for that, for merely speaking on a phone, possibly drifting out of a lane, possibly driving above or below the speed limit slightly without a collision, or at least a near collision, that the officer witnessed, would you, we would not have anybody get convicted of that. I asked that of our prosecuting agency's supervising attorney today. I said, "That's been my experience. Has that changed?" And she said, "No, that's exactly the way it is today." So inattentive driving is not an adequate code for what this behavior is trying to address. So there isn't something currently adequate in code to deal with this type of thing.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And I understand the argument that the chief's making, that it's, if no one was talking on their phone, then it's never going to be the cause of swerving out of your lane or speeding or whatnot. But to the point that you just made, isn't speeding, no matter how little over the speed limit or swerving out of a lane, aren't those already illegal?
Yes, those are illegal.
So while it may not fall under the law of inattentive driving, there's still illegal actions to have done, regardless of the cause of them?
Yes.
Chief, do you have any comments after taking testimony and some of the questions and discussion?
Madam Mayor, I don't know if some of the questions were actual questions, if they were just kind of rhetorical statements. But as far as the dog in the lap, it's interesting that you bring that up, because there's a lot of states that have actually made that a law. They've actually put it in place that says, "An animal has to be restrained inside your car. It can't be in your lap. And this, if you do that, this is the penalty." Not our state, other states. In our state, it would be the same action as anything else in the car. If that was a subject of the reason what caused you to crash or nearly crash, then you could be issued an inattentive driving ticket. If the dog's merely hanging out the window, how do you prove that that's a distraction inside the car? I don't, I don't know. Our surrounding states, our neighbors, have figured out that the only way they've been able to address this, because people have chose to not do the right thing, is to make it a law. Currently in Washington, currently in Oregon, and currently in Nevada, which I believe also around Idaho, make it unlawful to have that cellphone in their hands. I suspect, in the state of Idaho, that also is going to be true. But we operate just a little bit slower. And it may be one year, it may be two years, it may be five years before that becomes law. It's coming. The challenge I have, that I make to you, is can we wait? Can we afford that, knowing the burden it is creating on everybody's lives? And I know that every one of us in here has probably been on their phones when they shouldn't been.
Right.
Ask yourself, how would you sleep at night if you struck and killed somebody? Because you weren't being safe and you were just being lucky. We need to act on this. I'll stand for any other questions.
Any additional question, any other questions for the chief right now?
Madam Mayor, just for the record, I will not be here next week. I'll be out of town. So if you make some sort of decision that requires me to be here, just keep in mind I can't be here next week and someone will have to fill in for me.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I would be supportive of continuing this dialogue. I have three points that I would like to continue to discuss. Number one is the level of infraction, the penalty that's associated with it. I guess the third point was, let's continue to discuss further. So those are the two points that I wanted to, I just think it's important that, I think we should talk about, you know, how much it's going to cost, what's the penalty going to be in level of the infraction. So those are my two concerns. But I'm in favor of continuing the discussion.
So, Mr. Neri, can you reach out? I don't know if the other cities that have passed something have detailed what that penalty is, if it's an infraction or a misdemeanor. And it sounded like, from the chief's presentation, there is a set amount for infractions that is a law?
Ninety bucks?
Ninety bucks? Ninety dollars?
Madam Mayor, for current moving violations, for a speeding ticket, there is a set fine and there is a set court cost. And it averages, it comes out to about $93. But again, in the infraction code, you have the ability to set an infraction up to $300. It used to be the maximum fine was 100. That's not taking into account the court costs and fees. So the fine part is what you have the authority to control or direct. It was contemplated by the legislature last session to have a graduated citation for first and second and subsequent offenses of an infraction. And what it was, I believe, and I'm not 100% certain, it was $100, I think, then $200, and then $300. So you have that ability to set those infraction fines.
I like that.
And then the court cost gets tacked on top of that. And the court cost ends up being 50 to 60 bucks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'm supportive of the principle. Continue a couple of weeks, maybe to the eighth if the chief's here then. Whatever cleanup language in the draft that comes from the city, if there's some structure to punishment provision, we don't know what it would be, but perhaps you can include the structure to it. At least so the public sees kind of how it might be laid out. Decide that at a future date. One of the principles that you described, when we get to that discussion in a couple of weeks, is it's intended, in large part, to be an educational tool. And it has a deterrence effect, but an opportunity for people to learn. And we've used things like Alive at 25 as a carrot to try and educate, especially for younger drivers. So for a future discussion, there might be some opportunities to make a tool like this, if it were to go forward or successful. So future discussion. The eighth makes sense.
Okay. Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'll answer your question with a question. What we could do, perhaps, on the eighth, is we could have it as a public hearing during the workshop and have a public hearing at 6 o'clock. Is that possible, Mr. Neri? In the off chance it's easier for someone to show up during the day, they can? If not, we'll have a 6 o'clock. Maybe have it both?
You can do both.
That's a great idea. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I would suggest, since we'll be making some slight modifications, that we continue it as another first reading.
Okay. And the ordinance, Madam Mayor, the ordinance would be at the 6 o'clock first read part, right?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Mayor. With the public hearing.
Mr. Burton.
Move we continue. 8A?
7D?
7D, excuse me. 7D to October 8th. We'll continue that public hearing to occur at 4:30 during the workshop. And then at 6 o'clock during the regular meeting, where the ordinance will be presented for a new first read. Madam Mayor.
Can I get a second before we have discussion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Burton.
You have two council members that won't be here on the eighth. I won't be here and Councilman Kavner will not be here on the eighth.
Okay. I have it.
I understand. But like, I understand. You're right.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
This is awesome. I'm much quieter tonight than I normally am. I don't have any objections to having the public hearing, though, on the eighth. It's possible that council would make a decision that.
But if it's a first reading, we wouldn't make a decision that night anyways, right?
Unless you directed it.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't.
You could.
That is, Madam Mayor, that is the risk we, as council members, take when we are not here for the people's business. So if that council takes action and I'm not here with my soapbox, then that's volley on me.
Okay. So I do have a motion to continue to October 8th.
Madam Mayor, sorry. Just a couple other comments on this, and then we can move on. I want to thank the chief and legal department, Bill Neri. This is one at first blush, I was like, I don't want, I'm not behind this. But when your law enforcement, legal department say, "These are tools that we need," I take notice. I know we got some council members that have made up their mind, "We're going to do this." Other council members saying, "No, we don't want to do this." I am really still conflicted on this. And so I am hoping that we hear from members of the public that share their perspective. Councilmember Burton brings up a good point. It's rare that we hear from somebody who says, "This isn't a problem." The arguing is about what's the best way to solve.
Right.
Okay, I do have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to October 8th. All those in favor.
Madam Mayor, sorry to interrupt real quick. Leave it a bit. I just, I don't know if people have made up their minds or not. I think this public hearing process is pretty important. The, lots of people or a few people, all are what we weigh to determine. So I don't think anything's decided whether it happens at all or what version could happen. So I think, stay tuned. That's why the public process continues. Fair enough.
So I have a motion and a second to continue this to October 8th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay? The ayes have it. I would like to thank, Brian, I think, I love your passion on bicycle safety. I think the only way we're going to start changing people's behavior is to give them safe avenues to bike, both for transportation options and for recreation. It's frightening on the roads as a bicyclist. And you raise a really good point in terms of driver inattentiveness is scary. And I don't want it to be one of my grandkids that sacrifices themselves to prove that very point. So thank you for being here tonight. And thank you for your service. Okay? So we will remove item 8A because we will have a different reading to publish. Okay? Anything under nine for future meeting topics? If not, I move to our amended agenda for executive session and entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I move we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74-206-1D.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.